Before we proceed, I'd like to briefly turn the meeting over to one of our outstanding students who will receive the President's Award tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome to the daisus, Aaron Regalado from Hanks High School.
Thank you, President Ochoa, and good evening. My name is Aaron Regalado, and I'm the Student Council President at Hanks High School. It is my honor to call this meeting to order.
Good evening, and welcome to the Isleta Independent School District's Meeting of the Board of Trustees. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is a meeting of the board that the public is allowed to attend. As provided, Isleta ISD Policy PED, we invite members of the public to make comments during the citizens' input portion at the start of the meeting according to the instructions provided with the electronic posting notice of our meeting. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into a discussion on the matters in the citizens' input. We remind everyone that this is a board meeting often attended by students, and ask that we conduct ourselves in a manner that best represents the values and traditions of the Isleta Independent School District. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:04 PM. We have a quorum with Charlie Bustillos, Sotero Ramirez, Shane Hagerty, Mike Rosales, Connie Woodruff, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Catherine Lucero is unable to attend but is excused. Trustee Ramirez, will you please introduce our junior ROTC?
Thank you. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors, reciting the pledges of allegiance, and then posting the colors. The colors tonight are being presented by the junior ROTC color guard from Isleta High School. The color guard commander is Cadet Sergeant First Class Araceli Mancera. The other color guard members are Sergeant First Class Carla Cruz, Second Lieutenant Isabella Archuleta, and Sergeant Mariana Flores. The pledge leader is Cadet Colonel Ethan Swan, also from Isleta High School. Will you please stand for the presentation of the colors, the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance, the Texas Pledge of Allegiance, and a moment of silence? Please remain standing until the cadets have departed.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, please join me in the pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Please join me in a moment of silence.
Doctor de la Torre, do we have recognitions and introductions this evening?
Good evening, President Ochoa, Board of Trustees, and esteemed guests. Yes, our Associate Superintendent of Public Relations, Mr. Daniel Martinez, will lead our recognitions and introductions this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Doctor de la Torre. We have six recognitions for you this evening. At this time, we ask all trustees to please come to the front of the dais for the presentation. Audience members, please remain seated until the recognition is complete. Thank you. Our first recognition honors Hanks High School senior, Aaron Regalado, a kind-hearted student leader whose commitment to service extends far beyond his campus and this district. As Student Council President, Aaron has collaborated on numerous projects to benefit our community and our campus. In particular, he helped organize two fundraisers, the Chick-fil-A Battle versus Eastwood and the Hanks Castle Dog Walk. That brought in more than $5,000 for those in need. For the Chick-fil-A Battle, the Eastwood and Hanks communities were challenged to eat a Chick-fil-A for a week, and the school with the most sales could choose a charity to receive 80% of those sales. Hanks was declared the winner, and a $2,000 check was provided to the Annunciation House of El Paso. For the Hanks Castle Dog Walk, the Student Council partnered with a fashion club to raise $3,100 to benefit three nonprofits: the Annunciation House of El Paso, Center Against Family Abuse and Violence, and Pet Guardian Angel. Aaron, who serves as an athletic trainer at Hanks, was also recently named a junior counselor at the local and state level. He is a young man who is extremely committed to helping others with more than 1,000 hours of community service. His compassion, kindness, and his heart for service makes him a standout among his peers, and tonight, we honor him for his outstanding commitment to service excellence. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome this month's President Award winner, Hanks High School senior, Aaron Regalado. Aaron is accompanied by Student Activities Director Emma Abeytia and Principal Ruben Cadenah. Let's hear it one more time for Aaron. Our next recognition is in honor of the Riverside Rangers 2021 Championship Football Season. The Rangers brought home the district-by-district-and-area football championships, marking the first time in 16 years that the Rangers have won both the district and area championships. With a win-loss record of 11-2, the Rangers won two playoff games in 2021, scored a record number of points in a single season, and captured the area championship for only the third time in school history. The Rangers stellar season also resulted in 12 1-4A All-District Football selections, three All-City Football selections, and four All-State selections. In addition, six Ranger varsity football players were selected for the Greater El Paso Football Coaches Association All-Star Team. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me congratulate representatives of the 2021 Championship Football Team from Riverside High School, beginning with Senior Armando Lucero. And Junior Angel Muñoz. They are accompanied by Coach Gary Recoder and Principal Maribel Guillén. Let's hear it again for the Riverside Rangers. Our next recognition is in honor of the Eastwood High School Varsity Football Team, which became the third 6A school in El Paso history to advance to the Sweet 16 State Playoffs. The Troopers brought home bi-district-and-area championships, setting a new record for the school. The Troopers were also the first El Paso school to win a playoff game in Abilene, and the first 6A team from El Paso to defeat a Dallas-Fort Worth-area varsity football team in the playoffs in 16 years. In addition, quarterback Andrew Martinez set a city record in 2021 for the most passing yards by an El Paso quarterback. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me congratulate representatives from the 2021 Championship Football Team from Eastwood High School, beginning with Senior Emilio Valderama. And Senior Carson Murillo. They are accompanied by Coach Julio López and Principal Robert Martinez. Let's hear it again for the Troopers. Our next recognition is in honor of Parkland Pre-Engineering Middle School, which was among 50 campuses designated as a Texas School to Watch for academic excellence, responsiveness to the needs and interests of young adolescents, social equity, and commitment to helping all students achieve at high levels. Schools to Watch are recognized for a three-year period and must demonstrate progress on specific goals in order to be re-designated. As a result of this honor, Parkland Pre-Engineering Middle School was honored at the Making Middle School Matters Symposium in Austin, and will also be recognized at the National Forum Schools to Watch Conference this June in Washington, DC. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome representatives from our newest Texas School to Watch, Parkland Pre-Engineering Middle School, beginning with 8th Grader Arturo Beltran. 8th Grader Ruby Friday. Assistant Principals Laura Venegas, Adriana Pichardo, and Patricia Bazan. Let's hear it again for the Novilleros. Our next recognition is in honor of five outstanding musicians and singers from Hanks, Riverside, and Isleta High Schools, who were selected this year as the All-State Band and Choir Ensemble, the highest honor a Texas music student can receive. These students proudly represented the district when they performed alongside the state's best musicians at the Texas Music Educators Association Convention in San Antonio last month. Congratulations to our talented students on this wonderful accomplishment. Ladies and gentlemen from Hanks High School, please help me welcome clarinet player Anissa Rodriguez. Trumpet player Edwin Carli Martinez. And bass singer Joaquín Campos. They are accompanied by choir director Orlando Guerrero, band director Horacio Gómez, and Principal Ruben Cadenah. From Riverside High School, let's hear it for clarinet player Brianna Ortega, who was named to the All-State Band by the Association of Texas Small School Bands. She is accompanied by her band director Jason La Turner and Principal Maribel Guillén. And from Isleta High School, please help us welcome alto saxophone player Roberto Aguirre. He is accompanied by band director Daniel Colunga and Principal Judy Calderón. Let's hear it again for these outstanding student musicians. Our final recognition this evening is for a group of student wrestlers from Eastwood, Hanks, and Riverside High Schools, who won individual gold and silver medals at their state UIL championship meets last month. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me congratulate the four student athletes who captured medals in their respective UIL divisions, beginning with Eastwood High School, gold medalist Trevor Moreno, and silver medalist Miguel Solis. They are accompanied by Coach Devin Vasquez and Principal Robert Martinez. Next, from Hanks High School, please help me congratulate silver medalist Judith Sandoval. She is accompanied by Coach Steven Gutierrez and Principal Ruben Cadenah. And our final honoree tonight is silver medalist Jaden Bustillos from Riverside High School. He is accompanied by Coach Albert Lucero and Principal Maribel Guillén. Let's hear it one more time for our amazing student athletes. This concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
It's been a while. That was good.
Thank you for having us.
It's an honor. We'll bring it back.
It's a long way from sitting at home.
Sure is. It's so much better for the kids.
A lot of day.
Right. They are.
They're embracing.
Yeah, some of the little things are just a little strange.
Well, a little something before we get there.
Right, they look just a little strange. You can tell they missed, they missed a little socialization.
How to act.
Exactly. I mean, I see some of the strangest things I've ever seen. Laptop reports up time.
My 8th graders went the same way.
I bet.
Well, my freshmen.
He said that so many of the freshmen, they had no clue. They went into high school.
Yeah, they were 7th graders going into high school.
Yeah.
Let's hear it one more time for our amazing student athletes. This concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
Right. They are
They're embracing
Yeah, some of the little things were just a little strange. Why, they look just a little strange. You can tell. They missed, they missed this little socialization. We really did.
How to act.
Exactly. I mean, I see some of the strangest things I've ever seen. Laptop reports up time.
My eighth graders went the same way.
I bet.
Well, my freshmen.
He said that so many of the freshmen, they had no clue. They went into high school.
Yeah, they were seventh graders going into high school.
Yeah.
This year will be the sort of a transition year. Next year should improve significantly. And then the year after, I think we'll be back to normal. Hopefully.
Ms. Mathyson, do we have citizens input this evening?
No, sir, we don't.
Okay, thank you. Dr. De La Torre, do you have any reports for us this evening?
Yes, sir, President Ochoa, members of the board, colleagues and esteemed guests. We have our monthly COVID superintendent's update just to demonstrate that we remain vigilant in watching the data. Ms. Leeper, if you will.
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board, and Dr. De La Torre. I have a very brief two-slide presentation with the local COVID conditions and an update. As you can see, three out of four of our indicators are in the green while one is in the red. The red depicts the seven-day rolling average of new cases compared to the prior two weeks. It means there's a slight increase, one-tenth. Out of the last 14 days, three have been spent in the yellow zone while 11 have been in the green zone. When we look at the seven-day average of new COVID cases, you can see that at the end of March, we are approaching zero. So the rate of decline has slowed, but it's because we are nearing zero. On the 14-day rate of change, the peak above zero means that there are more new cases today than there were yesterday. And when it drops below and forms a valley under zero, it means there are less cases today than there were yesterday. And you can see at the end of the graph, it is right at zero, meaning it's about the same number of cases today as there were yesterday, but they're very few. And then when we look at the hospitalization rate for trauma service area I, you can see that we are well below the 25%, 30% that we were between January and February. We are around 4%. The threshold for concern set by the state and TEA was 15%, which we are well below. And with that, I can take any questions on the COVID indicators. No? All right, thank you.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of questions, and I apologize, Ms. Leeper, in advance. How's our absences as far as students and, you know, student attendance?
You know what? I don't have the exact data. Do either of you have it open?
I apologize. I should have asked.
No, that's okay. Attendance?
I can state that this week, the last three weeks, we haven't had any student positive cases reported.
That's right.
And in the last week, we have only had four employee positives over the break.
Okay, great. And then Dr. De La Torre made a comment that we remain vigilant. So for the community's benefit, we're still keeping up with our cleanings and all the disinfecting things that we do at the schools.
Yes, sir. All the common areas are fogged in the evenings. We still make sanitization materials available in the classrooms. We have masks available, although we encourage those students whose parents would like for them to wear one, to send their masks to school, and hand sanitizer is still everywhere.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leeper.
President Ochoa, members of the board, the second item addresses the 2020 census results and the process for redistricting, single-member districts.
Good evening, President Ochoa, trustees, Dr. De La Torre. For the record, my name is Susan Austin. I'm the in-house counsel for the school district. Tonight, we are not, this is not an action item, but this is information for you to take perhaps action in the future at a subsequent board meeting. As you know, the 2020 census was conducted in 2020, and the data that could be used for purposes of redistricting was released in the fall of 2020. Public maps show the population by voting precincts. It can also be broken down farther into census block groups. And with that data, we can construct a picture of how, you know, what the census shows about the current single-member districts, your seven trustee districts, and what their population is under the 2020 census. So this slide shows in the column, the fifth column over, the 2020 census data for the population in your trustee districts. I want to give you a little bit of extra columns, extra information, to see how you can see that, yes, for the 2020 census, District One was the smallest. You can see the other numbers for the other districts, and you can see how that has grown or diminished those populations since we did the redistricting in 2010. So we also did redistricting in 2010, and you can see that according to 2010 census, we were out of sync. In other words, they were not very even. And so we realigned the boundaries in 2010. And that's what the fourth column over is showing, the after 2010 redistricting. So when we did redistricting after 2010, we made the districts closer together in size. And now what I'm showing in the far-right column is how that size has changed since 2010. So there's a little more information I'll give you about that, but I wanted to give you that background. So you can see overall, the total size of the district population has shrunk by 4,531 since the 2010 census. But some districts have grown and some single-member districts have diminished in size. So the Texas Education Code provides, under Section 11.052, that if the census shows that the largest single-member district exceeds the population of the smallest single-member district by at least 10%, we must have a redistricting process. And so that's what the code provides. And when must that be done? It must be done by February 2023. We're a little bit later than some other entities because our next election is not until May of 2023. And we are required to do this redistricting by 90 days before the date of our May 2023 election. And that is basically February 5th, I believe. So the other thing I wanted to be clear is that this doesn't change the terms of the trustees for each district. They are still staggered. The next election will be for single-member districts two, four, and six, and not until May of 2025 for the other districts. So just real quick again, the 2020 census numbers, here they are for the seven single-member districts. And you can see that the largest is District Three with 33,784 people. And if you divide that by the smallest district, which is District One, 23,868, you get a ratio of 1.42 to 1. So the largest exceeds the smallest by 42%, so we have to redistrict. And I'll come, there'll be another map in here in a minute. So I just wanted to show you again. You can see where three is. Three is the northeast triangle, plus a little bit that's over here on the east side. That is the largest district. The smallest district is the sort of flesh color, which is down in the left-hand corner, as you can see there. Okay, so what are the requirements for the redistricting process? Well, it used to be a very cumbersome process because we were under federal court orders that required U.S. Department of Justice preclearance for everything we did. So there was a very complicated process. It was a long process, and we submitted about a three-inch binder to the U.S. Department of Justice to review everything we did and all the proceedings that we took to make sure we met the federal justice requirements. Those ended in 2012. So we are no longer subject to those requirements. And what does that leave? It leaves very few requirements on you all about how to redistrict. And really, the only requirements now about the process is that you have to take action in an open meeting. Well, that's not surprising. You have to do it by the February 5th, 2023 deadline. And then afterwards, you have to notify the county administrator. And again, the February 5th, 23 deadline is the last date. You'll want to do it before that so that any candidates have the ability to see whether, which district they live in, et cetera, and to do all the filings in time. So what are the requirements for the actual boundaries themselves, the new boundaries of the trustee districts? Again, the code says very little, the education code. Really, all it says is that it requires the trustee districts to be compact and contiguous. So you have to keep them bundled together. And as nearly as practical of equal population. All right, so that's really all it says. And there's virtually no law explaining this. But lawyers have been giving advice to their clients on this for years. And so the general consensus from different law papers that have been written in seminars, the advice is, if possible, to keep the current boundaries in place as much as possible. And that what relatively equal means is no more than a spread of 10%. Why 10%? Because that is what causes you to redistrict in the first place. So the idea is that the spread, the largest compared to the smallest, is no more than 10% greater. Where you do need to move boundaries in order to achieve that balance of population, the recommendations have been that, again, that the new districts, the revised districts, be compact and contiguous, that you avoid pairing incumbents. So you can draw the lines deliberately so that incumbents won't have to run against each other. The recommendation is to keep whole voting precincts. There's a lot of good reasons for doing that, just for ease of administration. And finally, where you can't keep a whole precinct, you could do it under a census block line or some other clear geographic boundary. Finally, you need to avoid diluting the minority, the voting power of any minority groups. We don't have that issue here because of the demographics throughout our district. So that's really not been an issue. All right, so one of the things I wanted to share with you is, so how would a school board sort of go about this process? Well, I think one of the first things that a school district can do is really begin to look at it first as a math problem, like a math problem. So what is the smallest number of people to move from each district, from an adjacent district to another district to get the right math balance? So there's a spread of no more than 10% and districts are compact and contiguous. So when you look at this chart, as you saw from the 2020 census data, District Number Three is way, is very large. It's way over. And you can see that we have a Number Three up in the east side of our district. So it used to be smaller than the balance, but now it is larger. And so really, a good starting point is to start with District Three from a math problem and see by taking that chunk on the east side of District Three and letting that go back into Five, what does that do? Well, we know that Three is a whole precinct. It is Precinct 100, and it is comprised of 5,149 people. Okay? So if you started there and you reduced Three by 5,149 people, why would you do that? You would do that so that Three can once again be compact and contiguous, which is the charge of the Texas Education Code. So if you moved that, then you can start to see, you take that resulting number. So look at the line for District Three, and you can see when you take out the 5,149, you get 28,635. So walk with me a little bit on the math. If that were the largest district, you can divide that number by 1.1, and you can see what is the minimum size of the smallest district. So that's your number that you're trying to get to for all districts being at least 26,032. So from a math problem, if you made Three, if you started with making Three contiguous and compact, that's how you get the largest size of 28,635. And now you know what your smallest size needs to be. Now it's just an algebra problem. And you can look at who would take from their neighbor district and how much to get within these bounds. So for example, if you've done the step with District Three and you get that size, then you can see that District, let me see, let me look here. So if you put 2,164 people into District One to bring it up to the minimum size, where do you get it from? Well, you get it from its neighbor. Okay? It needs to be adjacent. So let's say you get it from Number Two. Okay, you take from District Two, but that puts District Two just a little bit below the minimum threshold. So Two takes a little bit from where? Takes it from Four. It's, again, its neighbor. So if you do those steps, you're good with One, you're good with Two, you're good numerically with Three, you're good numerically with Number Four. Now let's look at Five, Six, and Seven. Well, Five, you just added 5,149 people by putting Precinct 100 back into its adjacent district, which is Number Five. So you do that, and you can see then that you've got plenty of people in Five. Where you don't have enough people is in Six and Seven. You need 348 more people in Six. And where can they get it from? They can get it from Seven. Seven can easily get that amount of money, of people, excuse me, from Five. So it's really a math. You can start with a math problem and see that it's not rocket science. And it doesn't have to be political, highly political, when you have the kind of demographics throughout the district that we have. That's good. And then you can look at it and really do it in a way that is efficient and moves the fewest number of people. So how could you do this? I know that some boards and a lot of cities, and the city of El Paso, they go through a lengthy process. You can do that. You don't have to do that. There is nothing that requires you to do that kind of lengthy process. For example, through board action, the board could authorize the staff, but alternately, a law firm, perhaps with a staff designee to analyze this data, give them some guidelines, and have them come back with a plan or one or two or three plans, something manageable that would meet the guidelines that the board could set in another meeting. The board could set guidelines. Those guidelines could be like the ones that the law firms, the advice that's generally given. You could also give direction that they should avoid trying to realign schools and trustees in a different district, except, number three, we know that if we move trustees in a different district, except, Number Three, we know that if we move that Number Three, District Three chunk back into the, some, one of its adjacent east side district, that that's going to move Pebble Hills Elementary. We, we know that. But it's being moved in a way that is consistent with what we've always, you know, conceptually thought about. We know that your, your trustee districts don't align perfectly with the learning communities, we all know that. But in general, they, they align, they try and align with the schools. So then you could hold a, a public meeting, and you could definitely invite people that we know are interested in, in the census, like in the city, there's a lot of people who run their neighborhoods and who have an interest and will want to come. We could post information about the proposals on the website, everybody could see what they are, they could provide comments, all that could be fed back to you, we could hold a special hearing, you could, you could hear all that information, and ultimately, you could move, when the time is right, into what steps you want to take next. So it doesn't have to be a year-long process. I thought it might need to be, but it really doesn't, when I researched it. In fact, there's no requirement that you do all the steps that you used to have to do when the federal's, US Department of Justice was overseeing the process. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. I will say that a couple of other things regarding a law firm. I know we have used a, a different law firm 10 years ago, we used the Walsh Gallegos firm. Mr. Sofie's firm has also been, has done redistricting work and could certainly be familiar and handle something like that if you were inclined to do that. One thing about a law firm, which is even different from any other group doing it, is they owe a fiduciary duty by law to the entire district and to every single one of you evenly, to the superintendent, to the taxpayers, to the whole entity. And I think they've demonstrated over the years that they certainly can do that. Why would you want a, a staff designee, perhaps someone like Dr. Raul Medellin, because he's our data guru? He can get you any information you want, and he's good with numbers, and that would lower the cost perhaps of the law firm. So it's something that could be done relatively quickly, in a matter of months, not in the matter of multiple months, and I wanted to put that for you. So I'm happy to address any questions. I think I pressed a button accidentally here so that I can't see the screen, I'm sorry, but anyway, I'll be happy to address any questions.
Thank you for the report, Ms. Austin. Just, I'm just curious, and, and I have not discussed it with trustee Hagerty, so I, I don't want to get in trouble with him, but could we not, Ms. Austin, could we not just take that little piece of District Three that's, that borders Montana and is part of the, I guess, the Hanks Learning Community, and, and just move that to the Hanks Learning Community, and, and that would meet the, the requirement? I mean, obviously, we'd have to do the math on it, but wouldn't that, wouldn't that address that?
All right, so let's say that's the only step you, you do, okay? So let me go back to that slide real quick. I, I wish that that could be the only thing you do, but what that would do is that would bring, if you took 28, 635, you don't have enough people, it comes out to about 14%. So one of the things that I did look at is whether we could just make that an outlier, okay? And have it be the number that it is after you, after you take those people out of, out of there. And then just balance within 10% the remaining districts. That would require almost, would require very few changes after that. Mr. Sofie and I have talked about that. He doesn't know that that would be legally acceptable, that what, because, because it would be 14%, it could be as much as 14%. That is certainly something that if the board wants to direct, or, or, something I can look into further to try and analyze that. But that is, I mean, I, that's certainly a, one thing to look at is what happens if that's the only thing that is done. I think one of the things that it will do, if you just moved that into the, into the, well, you could move part of it into Hanks and part of it into Eastwood, because if you move it all into Eastwood, for example, then Eastwood's going to be way bigger than the smallest district. So you, you still have to push down some of the population all the way to the smaller-sized districts, some, not a lot, but some.
I, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, especially about the 14%. I just, you know, I always thought, since I've been looking at this map, since I, you know, before I got elected the first time, that that was just kind of a, talk about an outlier, you know? And, and the other thing too is that our, our schools, you know, we, we talk about our learning communities, and that kind of makes a whole lot more sense, and, I don't know, I'd be curious, I don't know how the rest of the board is, feels about this, but I would just be curious to, just to look at the numbers to see if we can make that one simple adjustment and what it would actually do. I, I think simpler is better, I think the least amount of moves is better, but obviously, we certainly want, we have to stand the law, within the law, but, I don't know, just something to look at. And again, I, I think that little piece of District Three is just, it's always been kind of interesting to me, so.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Great, thank.
And there's, there's a couple of things that I'd like to ask you. One of the things is on the law firm, that is the board's decision, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we, we as, as, as a board will discuss that and, and I guess select the law firm that we can entrust this with, right?
Yes, sir, and, and if, in order for the board to do that, I think that would have to be done as a posted action item, so it would be part of your subsequent action and directives.
No, that's, that would be one of the first things. The second thing is, and it's in line with what Mr. Ramirez was saying, is that this is only one possible, because it says possible adjustment.
Absolutely.
So there could be other math solutions to this that would not, I know that, that part there on, that borders Montana, that was because at that time Parkland had less population at that time. And in the foreseeable future, I think Parkland has more, more, yeah, it's going to expand to, to a point that, what are we going to do? I'm, I'm not saying that we're going to be here, but 10 years from now, that, what, what are they going to do? It's not going to be a, it's going to be a compact district, but I, you know, it's, it's going to be a problem that we can foresee because geographically, it's, it's in the north part of El, El Paso. How are we going to handle that?
Well, you're absolutely right. I mean, this, it, you, you could make Three even smaller, okay? But you would have to assign someone, some district, a portion of that northeast triangle, all right? That's the only way to make it even smaller, is to give someone that. And then by, by virtue of that, the district that you took it from is no longer compact and contiguous.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, because that's 10 years from now, we might not even.
Right, but one, one of the ways that I think you do that is you can also raise the floor, okay? So if you, if you moved more people around within the remaining districts, you could raise the floor and make more room in the future for the, for the different, for growth. So that's one way you could do it. You could be a lot more aggressive now to make sure that all your small districts are brought up as much as they can be, and that's one way to prepare for growth. It's just, it just runs counter to the idea of what's the minimum amount we have to do now.
Because if you, if you did the math and you made them pretty much all equal, there'd be about 27,000 something for each district. And, I don't know, maybe that would be something that we could look at as far as, as boundaries, I mean, as, as determining what the boundaries were to keep the population fairly even.
Absolutely, sir. You can, that can certainly be the board's direction, and.
And that's just a proposal. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying that that's what the board would like, but I think to even out the, for future boards to handle this, maybe that would preclude that in the next census, as far as, as let us, is concerned. I know we're, we're bounded, we're not, our growth is, we can't expand like other districts, but we need to plan to make sure that every district is represented, well, has the same population throughout, throughout, wherever you have District One all the way to District Seven. But, oh, my other question was, I know that you put numbers here, 348, 190, 1,904, and How would that look as far as board has district lines on there? Where would you take those 348 people from?
I, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I think that's, that, again, it was just a math problem. I think what you would look at is the size of precincts, okay? So what size is a precinct that's perhaps on the border between this district and that district? What size is it? If it's close to the size that you need, or these two precincts together, and we have all the precinct data, so that's what, you know, whoever you give this math problem to, this, this plan problem to, that's where I think they should start, is they should look at the size of the precincts that are on the border between one district and another, and look for those that can achieve your result.
Well, that's where I would start, start as a, with this math problem, is just make them all equal and then make the adjustments accordingly to what makes really good sense. Because this really, when I looked at this, when I started running, it was like, wow, that is a big jigsaw puzzle, and, and maybe it would make better sense, I don't know. What do the rest of you think? Yes, sir?
Let me, let me just make a very brief comment. Since I've been on the board, I've had several people in District Two that live north of the freeway, and they could not understand why they didn't belong to either Four or, or Five, but we're just looking at, at what people's conceptions are. What I would like to do, or like, I would like to see is at least three proposals, and one of which, which would kind of dig into the, the possibility of growth, which is only going to be northeast, as far as growth, and kind of work it that way. And I, I definitely don't want to do that, I'd love to have a law firm that's, that has the experience to do that. And I would like to have a list of, of law firms that would bid, and that way we can make a honest, unbiased decision. If that could be done, I would appreciate that. But that point on the north of the freeway, they, at, at that time, I, I felt, well, is this the way that the demographics fall? Which is the case, but if there's any movement that we could do, we might make an adjustment that way.
Well, I know in, in the past, in past redistricting efforts, it used to be where the freeway was a dividing line between districts, but that, that no longer worked mathematically. And so, so there was a time when we had to come up with a way to add people above the I-10 line to districts below. And so we already, we already sort of tried to achieve that and could not sustain that. And that's not to say we can't look at it again and see if there's a new, a new way to do it, it's just that I, I think the population, just the shift of the population has been such that that was not mathematically possible.
Well, like I said, math is easy, it's the, how you, how you provide this, how you outline these districts is the hard part.
Yes, sir.
And, and like, like Mr. Rosal, I said, I would expect at least three or four proposals as to what would the board like to decide on, I think. Not just one, not just two, maybe three or four would be something that would, would at least give us plenty of options as to what to decide for, and, and minimize the impact on a lot of these districts as it is. I know District Three has been an outlier ever since, since I got on there, but it was because, I understood, because the population at that time was smaller. But now the growth possibility is, is far, the future of, of District Three seems to be the district that's going to grow quite a bit in size, depending, so economically as well as homes and everything else. So we just got to help out our fellow, whoever here is here 10 years from now, I don't, but I think we have to be smart about this so they don't have to go through this whole thing again.
We'll, we'll definitely keep the board apprised perhaps with more BCs and also work towards bringing new proposals in future board meetings for how to proceed.
Would you be adverse to having, like Dr. Medellin, like President Ochoa says, the math is the easy part, it's the political side of this that makes it hard. So could he be, be willing to come up with like three, just based on the math?
Yeah, just base it on the math, you can come up with three. It may be a little more difficult to come up with four. The reality is that the least populated districts, one and six, are going to have to pull from a district above them, and it will become a domino. So when one pulls from two, then two has to pull from four. When six pulls from seven, seven pulls from five, five picks up three, and then three remains sort of an island out there. And going back to what Susan said, is you can make it complicated, but you really shouldn't. I mean, you're, so the question for the board might be, okay, if I'm going to pull from two, and I'm in One, Riverside, yeah, I suppose you could take one neighborhood over another neighborhood, but then it becomes somewhat political. So you may want to look at streets and boundaries that, that sort of make sense. If you're going to take two blocks, then it would make sense to take these two blocks. The same thing goes for two taking from four, from Eastwood. You wouldn't want to necessarily take a chunk out of the northeast corner of Four for Two, because first of all, it has to be contiguous. And since you've already started in that right-hand corner, then there may be a street or two or three that you could pull into that, that would suffice. Seven is going to bump up into Five, One, two blocks up, but that's okay because Five is taking four or five blocks from Three, and Eastwood is, and, excuse me, and, and Hanks is also taking one or two blocks to the west from Five. And what you'll find is that there will be sort of natural streets and cul-de-sacs and stuff like that that lend themselves to an attendance boundary rather than overcomplicate it and come in and look at three or four different things, but we could certainly play with it. But we could certainly play with it. But there's no way you're ever going to get that yellow in Four back below the freeway. And you're not going to get that orange north of the I-ten back in Seven, because it's actually going the other way. It's headed toward Three. But we can come up with maybe two, three options for, for the board to maybe look at in a workshop.
Okay.
Magnified, so you're looking at actual street names and... The one thing we would like to do is keep your home.
Yeah, that would be nice.
In, in, in your area.
Ms. Woodruff and I attended a, a community meeting where the city was presenting on the, the new boundaries for their political districts, and, and also, I think, changing some boundaries. Did the city finally finish that project?
They have a very late date for that. I also went to, to one of their meetings, and I have in my file, I can look up, but their, their dates are pretty far out.
Yeah, but actually, the, they have to have that decided by June, I think it was, that they said. This June, they have to have those boundaries drawn, because they have to run their, they run their elections in November.
Correct. I consider that fairly far out. I mean, I think they're pushing it to about the last minute they can push it. I mean, when you look at when they're, they were going to hold their city council meeting and et cetera, like, and when it was the last date for the public to submit plans, that, I mean, they're inviting that. I think they pushed it out. Wow. But, but they almost had to, if they were going to undertake that kind of process and have to get it done between the time that they got the census data and the time that they have to have their filing deadlines for the November election. So, they didn't have a whole lot of time, and they pushed it out, in my opinion, about as late as they could possibly push it out. And I think you all need to be mindful of the calendar, but not as mindful as they did, because you've got more time. But, but again, if we want to be ready by February, which means we want to be ready by December, which means there's holidays, there's breaks, there's board meetings, there's, I mean, you need to, you need to be well underway by the summer. You need to be considering, I think, plans, concrete proposals by the end of the summer. And I think Mr. Safi would, would concur with that. We talked about possible timelines. So you have some time, which is why we're bringing it to you now. If you want, it just sort of, you need to give direction about how involved a process you want, how many times you want to circle back to it and put it out, and all that sort of thing, because that will affect the timeline.
I wanted to say one thing, because I've attended, actually, two, two of those city meetings, and their process is so complicated. I mean, it is, quite honestly, and the maps that they're presenting are probably like night and day to each other. I mean, this one's very extreme this way, this one's extreme this way. And so my comment is, I hope that we can find some way to make this not, not that complicated. Because, and not that extreme, because to me, by the end of the second meeting, my head was spinning, and I was like, I don't get any of this. So, I guess I'll end up wherever you put me as far as a voter is concerned. And so that, I'm hoping that we will avoid that kind of, of process and opt for the most simple, fairest options following the law possible. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item or presentation number three is a discussion on consolidations, relocations, attendance boundary realignments, including schools in the Isleta, Bel Air, high school learning community, and a final decision on Young Women's Leadership Academy.
Good evening again. Thank you, Dr. De La Torre. So, as you may recall, on February sixteenth, we had a very detailed, lengthy presentation with a plethora of data and facts to give you the context for our recommendation that evening. Immediately on February seventeenth, in order to give the community a five-days minimum notice, we sent out invitations for parent and community meetings. Those actual meetings were held on February, or between February twenty-second and twenty-fourth. Faculty meetings were also held between February eighteenth and twenty-fourth, and those invitations were sent by campus administrators. And generally, the meetings were early in the morning or immediately after school. Altogether, we held twenty sixth-grade transition meetings, eleven consolidation and relocation meetings, for a total of thirty-one meetings in that six-day period. Now, some of the meetings did serve a joint purpose. We discussed both the sixth-grade transition and possible consolidation, for example, at Mesa Vista. We've come back to you with the following plan, which intends to direct all sixth-grade students in the Bel Air, Eastwood, Hanks, and Riverside learning communities to the middle schools in August 2022, open a half-day universal pre-k for three-year-olds, also in August 2022, consolidate Mesa Vista Elementary at Loma Terrace in August 2022, redirect approximately a hundred and seventy sixth and seventh grade students currently attending Rio Bravo Middle School to Isleta Middle School in August of 2022, and relocate Young Women's Leadership Academy to the Rio Bravo campus in August 2023. We have an attendance boundary that needs to be considered to align the R.E.L. Washington transition for sixth-grade students there to attend the brand-new Hanks Middle School. You can see in the red oval, the previous western boundary for the Hanks community was at Lee Trevino Drive. The new western boundary is bounded, or is in yellow, bounded by red, and that is at Yarborough Drive. And that is the conclusion of the presentation this evening. I will be happy to take any questions.
Yeah, one of the things that we went back and forth on was the, the Rio Bravo and whether or not doing it over time. In talking with most of the stakeholders, it appears that they've resigned to the fact that, that they're moving. And what that does is, I think, it gives us access to the campus to go in and install the refrigerated air and do all of the, the upgrades. But the one thing that has to happen is, if we're going to make that investment, the Young Women's Leadership Academy is moving to the Rio Bravo campus in August of 2023. So, there's a benefit to the district in that we get access to the building without having students present, but it comes with the final decision that, that is where the Young Women's Leadership Academy will be moved a year from now.
No questions? Thank you, Mr..
I'm one of the proponents of consolidation. I have been. And, but I had the opportunity to, on my own, went down to the Young Women's Leadership Academy and wanted to see what they have and where they're moving to. And I just, I would like to share this with the rest of the board, if you have not been down there. The, the ideal situation is move that school to Rio Bravo, which on paper looks great. But if we're going to run, if we're going to have a leadership academy with the vision that we have for those young women, I want to, I want to see and make sure that we have the same amenities at Rio Bravo that they are currently accustomed to and are enjoying. And I'm heading, yeah, I know where you, I think you know where I'm headed. There's some adjustments that I'd like to have them, have you all considered, Dr. La Torre? And I'll start with the science area. There's seven of them currently, the STEM labs. And I believe moving it over to Rio Bravo, we're down to three. So that's a cost. The cafeteria is the one that I was really kind of concerned. Currently, there's enough space for seven hundred and twenty. And I think we, we would move to Rio Bravo with about three hundred. Is that what, will, will we accommodate our population? And I've got another thing, too, that was brought to my attention, too, is we currently enjoy that drop-off for the young ladies. And are we going to be able to do that at Rio Bravo? There's some modifications that...
Yeah, those are very good questions. What I will tell you is that no one in the district gets the investment that the Rio Bravo students get on a per-student basis. No one gets the same curric, Young Women's Leadership Academy, excuse me. No one gets the technology that they enjoy. No one gets the per-student expense that they enjoy. And while I appreciate their, their perspective, the truth is, and I'll just give you one example. There is an art teacher that teaches, like all teachers teach, six classes out of eight classes. Period one, three students. Period two, one student. Period three, four students. Okay, so what we have to do is, we have to separate what can only be described as Valhalla, what must be the most comfortable environment, and apply the same standard that we apply for all of our, all of our other schools, so that teachers who, at Eastwood High School, for example, on a given day, teach six periods with thirty students, a hundred and eighty students, correct papers, call those parents, fill out progress reports, do report cards, don't take exception to a teacher who has twenty-four student contacts in one day, so that they can have one individual classroom set aside for sixth-grade dance, seventh-grade dance, eighth-grade dance, and those are the beginning classes. And then we've got sixth-grade intermediate, seventh-grade intermediate, eighth-grade intermediate, and then we've got advanced. And, yeah, I assume that that is a very, very ideal environment for those young ladies. And I don't believe for a minute that if we move from the current campus to this other campus, because it happens to be a little bit out of the way, that any one of those girls or those families are going to leave that school. The last thing I will say is that that first class that pursued the Young Women's Leadership Academy had one hundred and twenty-five sixth-grade girls. Of those, I'm pleased that forty-eight of them are going to graduate, and all of them have scholarships. However, the current sixth-grade class has closer to fifty girls. So if we use the same ratio, and about one in three girls graduate, that means that the current sixth-grade students will be attending their graduation in six years, seven years. And we'll celebrate the graduation of about eighteen girls, right? And it's still costing us the same as it did when we had a hundred and twenty-five girls. So there are some things that we need to work out. We're committed to the Young Women's Leadership Academy. We're committed to Principal Villalobos. But I think we need to be realistic about what that program can and should be. And one of the things that they need to do is need to figure out how to require less classrooms by not offering everything under the sun, because it doesn't seem to be having the impact we want, given that this year we're struggling to keep fifty-seven girls, where seven years ago, it was easy, and we turned away girls and ended up with a hundred and twenty-five. So, at some point here in the near future, I would welcome the opportunity to have a workshop with the board to kind of go through and share the master calendar with you and the number of student contacts that teachers have, and what classrooms are being used for, so that we can get a full understanding of what our investment looks like and decide whether or not, A, we should continue to make that investment, and I hope we do, but that we do it in a very prudent way, so that you don't have a, a significant gap in what we spend on one group of students versus what we spend on another group of students.
Your point is well-taken. And, but based on what you just said, according to your projections of, of the enrollment, so what, you're, in essence, you're letting us know that we should expect a smaller group of students at the Young Women's Leadership, unless something happens.
Right. Unless we can figure out what about 2015 attracted over a hundred and twenty-five girls, so that we actually had to turn some girls away compared to 2022, where we're holding on to fifty-seven girls. And we've actually, I think, have become more open to girls who may not have met the academic standards and other standards, and we're still having a hard time attracting, recruiting, and enrolling anything, anywhere near a hundred and twenty-five girls. And maybe we need some kind of a campaign, maybe we need some kind of a push, but we need to find that out. And then the second thing is that, and this is not unique to our Young Women's Leadership Academy. I think it's across the entire network, is that it's becoming harder and harder to convince a young lady not to want to go to high school at the end of the eighth grade. So the majority of those girls that were part of that inaugural class of one hundred and twenty-five didn't leave us gradually over time. They enjoyed their experience when it was an elementary school, but when it came time to move into the ninth grade, all of a sudden, they wanted to play competitively. They wanted to go to the dances, they wanted to go to the football games, they wanted to be around young men. And I understand, it's natural. And parents and students who had made commitments to us early on that they would be with us for all seven years, given the, the investment, simply left at the end of the eighth grade and returned to Eastwood, Bel Air, Franklin, Socorro. And we need to figure that out, too, because we're seeing it, boom. And then all of a sudden, we're running a high school program, and in this case, it could be a high school program for a grade level of less than a hundred students. And here I am, closing, consolidating, and redirecting students, because they don't have the numbers. Yet the idea of moving them into a new building with air conditioning is being, there's, there's resistance. And it's a little disappointing, but I'm going to put the kids ahead of the disappointment and do what's right for them. And I think what's right for them is that they get in a new building with refrigerated air. Yes, less classrooms, but the classroom issue isn't a student number issue. There's only three hundred and sixty students. It is a course management issue. And, in my opinion, offering advisory and avid for all students, so there's a redundancy there. And trying to provide every possible elective that you can for those girls, which I don't have a quarrel with, but none of our other comprehensive high schools or even our early college high schools provide as many opportunities as the Young Women's Leadership Academy tries to provide for their girls. And yet we're still at three hundred and sixty students in seven grade levels. If that were one of these other regular schools, we'd be talking about them right now, and where we were going to consolidate them. So, we're going to work with them, but they're going to need to work with us if we're going to make it successful.
And I'd also like to add, for Mr. Rosales's benefit, I've spent an awful lot of time down at Rio Bravo, and, you know, thanks to the trustees and the district leadership and the leadership of Dr. Casala, we have a nice school down there. They have some new facilities in there. Dr. Casala kind of guided all that, she didn't kind of, she did guide all that. And there's a few things that need to be done right now, I, you know, in my personal opinion. But the ability to, to move students in and out and to have parents pick up, pick up and drop off kids is, is certainly there. And so, I'm not worried about it, and I'm very comfortable putting them in that facility. I, I think it's a very nice school, and, and the, and the community is welcoming as well, too. So, I just wanted to add that, too.
Can I add something also? Vice versa, the Hillcrest facility is a nice school. It's, and it's, it's stood the test of time. It's a, it's a nice facility, but it's nothing compared to what they would receive over at Rio Bravo. Rio Bravo offers them so much more opportunities for the sake of environment, and not just having extra rooms or extra things like that. They have a lot more opportunity for a nice, nice learning environment over at Rio Bravo. And Hillcrest, I love you. I graduated many of my children through that school. And it's not a slam against... And it's not a slam against that school, but it's, uh, like Dr. Delatorre says, it's tired. It's worked, it's worked, it's worked, it's worked and it's tired.
You know, and I, and I live in the area, actually live a couple of blocks away from it. So I know the, the community would be so welcoming for the, the Young Women's Leadership Academy. My daughter went to Rio Bravo, fantastic school, fantastic school. Dr. Casada was her principal over there. Uh, she did a great job along with Mr. Acuna. And, you know, I, I walk those hallways, I see their brand new gym. They have a lot of things that, to offer for the Young Women's Leadership Academy, including the community, which is a great community down there. And they would welcome a hundred percent.
I hope I didn't leave you people with the, the, the thought that I'm against Rio Bravo. No, that's not the case. All I'm asking is that if we're going to move these ladies to the, the new facility, that we at least provide them with, uh, enough tools to continue their search.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you didn't hear me say that, I didn't want Rio Bravo in any way, shape or form. Because it's part also of our, of our vision to consolidate where we need to consolidate. But, um, no, and I've not been to Rio Bravo. Uh, I stay pretty much with Eastwood. But, um, that's my only point is whatever we provide, Dr. Delatorre.
I guarantee it, sir.
Yeah, okay.
We'll take care of that for you.
Thank you.
Can you hear us? Check your volume. In other words, talk to us.
Yes, I did not hear an intro, but I can hear you if you're talking to me.
We can hear you. How are you this evening?
All right. Perfect, I'm doing well, how are you all?
Let me introduce you real quick, uh, this is Tyler, right? Tyler Chamnis. He's going to do a presentation on CareSalus, um, a way to maybe address the, some of the mental and emotional, um, challenges that are, are students, uh, that our counseling staff have recognized, uh, that have resulted in traumatic, uh, events in some cases for kids and their families and members of the community. And we, I think, have discovered a way to provide them with a service. And by they, I mean employees, students, parents, siblings. But with that, I'll let you do your work, Tyler, and rather than do the presentation for you.
Thank you so much and good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to get on the agenda tonight. Really excited to share this information with you all. So my name is Tyler, I'm the primary point of contact from CareSalus. And we just recently partnered up with Eastleta to provide our service to all stakeholders. And I'm just going to run through a really quick slideshow presentation to formally explain who CareSalus is and how we'll be supporting your families. I'll show you the tools that are available and hopefully have a couple of minutes for Q and A and feedback as well. With that being said, I'll go ahead and share my screen and pull up the slideshow. And we'll jump right into that. All right, so CareSalus, we are a twenty-four seven mental health care coordination service on a mission to calm the chaos of the mental health care system and break down any barrier that might prevent someone from getting connected to care. Right now, we're serving over four thousand schools across the United States, both K through twelve and higher ed. Over three million students have access to our service. But when we partner with an institution like your district, the service is not only available to the students, it's also available to their families. It's available to the staff and the staff families as well. So universal access throughout the sites. And because of that, over twelve million people have access to the service currently. Now, in our ca- care coordination efforts on behalf of the districts that we have partnered with, we have saved these districts over two hundred and eighty-five thousand hours in care coordination. The reason why we're doing what we're doing is be, as, as some of you might know, navigating the mental health care system on your own can be a little bit chaotic. And these are just some of the challenges that can get in the way of someone who needs help, getting the help that they deserve, whether it's the social stigma of reaching out for help, long wait times, navigating insurance, language barriers. We have put a system in place to hold your hand through this process, to really break down those barriers on your behalf. And again, to calm the chaos of the mental health care services. We're able to do that through two pathways of care coordination. We have the warm handoff, which is done through an internal dashboard. So we are currently training your mental health teams and the admin on how to use this dashboard and the information that it is included in. And they can refer families directly to CareSalus through this dashboard. I'll show you what that looks like really quickly, do a quick demo on that. But we are able to keep the counselors and the psychologists and the nurses and the principals in the loop throughout the process through this dashboard, so that they get live updates on the status of the cases and have full transparency there, which allows them to hold all parties involved accountable and ultimately just have the peace of mind to know that the families are getting taken care of. There's also a lot of great marketing content that we've customized for Eastleta and analytics to show the data and utilization. CareMatch is a self-serving site that you have your own proprietary link in the district. And I'll show you where to find that information and how that works. That one is available to all stakeholders and allows them to anonymously and confidentially get matched up with local providers that meet their specific needs for both mental health and substance use and the ability to do that from the comfort of your home. But all roads lead to the care companions here in the middle. They are the heart and soul of what we do. These are individuals who are dedicated to helping families get connected to providers that meet their specific needs. So they are the ones who wait on hold, who check availability, who navigate insurance and make sure that providers specialize in the specific needs of the family. They do all that vetting for you. They help to schedule the appointment and follow up afterwards to make sure that it's a good fit. The care companions are available in over two hundred and fifty languages. And again, they can be contacted twenty-four seven. When we do our care coordination, we're able to leverage a robust database of providers that consists of over two hundred and sixty thousand providers across the country. And these range in all pathways of care. So everything from individual therapy, which is what we're most often used for, to outpatient programs, inpatient programs, partial hospitalization, residential treatment for both mental health and substance use. We work with families that have all types of insurance. We do not want that to be a barrier. So if a family has private insurance, we'll help them find a provider that accepts their plan. If a family has Medicaid, Medicare, we'll help them navigate those systems and find appropriate resources. If a family does not have insurance, that is okay. We will help them find sliding scale out-of-pocket options that adjust based on income. And sometimes you could find free options as well. So it's important to note that CareSalus does not have any financial relationships with the providers, which allows us to have an ethical and an unbiased matching process. We will verify and match providers based on these categories and make sure the family gets the soonest available appointment. We are here to bridge the gap to community providers. We are here to coordinate care for mental health and substance use specifically. We do not, CareSalus does not care, does not diagnose, assess or provide the treatment. But we will connect families to licensed professionals who can do so. And most importantly, this is meant to work alongside the school personnel and services, keeping them in the loop each step of the way. This is a complimentary resource to really wrap around the school-based support. Your team is doing an amazing job. This is just an additional layer of support. And I'll give you some examples of when CareSalus can be leveraged. So if school-based services are at capacity or unavailable, you can certainly loop in CareSalus. Staff can do the warm handoff or they can give someone our information. If the needs of the family exceed the scope or schedule of school-based services, that's typically the most appropriate time to loop in CareSalus and do that referral or give someone our information. If the individual in need prefers a community-based provider as opposed to school-based services, we can certainly coordinate care in that situation. Sometimes the anonymity and the confidentiality of going through a third party helps to break down that stigma and encourages people to reach out for help that might not feel comfortable otherwise. And lastly, we can coordinate aftercare. So if there is a hospitalization or fifty-one fifty, we can help set up an intensive outpatient program or an inpatient program post-stabilization. Right, so that's everything that I wanted to share with you all for the slideshow. I'll show you these tools really quick so you can see what I'm talking about. All right. So this is CareMatch. This is the self-serving site that is available to all of your stakeholders. This website is caresalus.com/ysleta. Again, it's caresalus.com/eastleta. It does not require a login, it does not ask any personal information. It's completely anonymous, completely confidential, very user-friendly. So your students, your students' families, your staff, your staff families can come here, answer a quick questionnaire regarding whatever they're struggling with, the severity, your demographics and your insurance. And based on your answers, we'll generate a list of local providers that meet your specific needs. You can reach out to them directly or loop in the care companion at no cost, which is really what we encourage. You can email, ph- phone call or video chat directly to the care companions twenty-four seven. They will pull the list of providers you're matched up with and call them on your behalf to vet them further and ultimately to help you schedule the appointment. This website can be translated to all of these languages here in the top right corner. It's over seventy languages. Lastly, I'll just show you this dashboard really quick. This is a sample of what your counselors, your nurses, your principals will have access to, where they can refer families, they can check the status of the case and see the timeline here in the case details. And then they will also have access to, uh, the administrators will have access to very valuable data and analytics on how our service is being leveraged in your district and who is getting access and who's getting help. That's everything I wanted to share with you all tonight. Thank you so much for your time. If there are any questions, comments, concerns or feedback, I'm happy to address them.
We have a question from trustee Rosales Ramires.
Whatever his name is. Uh, Mr. Chamnis. Mr. Chamnis, uh, uh, my question to you is going back when you're talking about the financial arrangements, you said that depending on their ability to pay, you talked about a sliding scale. And then I didn't, you were going kind of fast, I didn't understand that. The next sentence was something about in some cases you provide your free or in some circumstances, something like that. I forgot the term you used. Can you go, tell me about, tell me about that again? Uh, we can't hear you, sir.
Is your microphone on?
You didn't hear me? I don't think we're hearing on either side of the conversation.
We may be having audio problems. If you can hear me, give me a thumbs up.
Might solve that problem.
Check, check.
Well, he can't see me. He's looking at you.
Check, check.
Um, Dr. Delatorre. The, um, what I heard him say was that if someone doesn't have insurance, they will look for sliding scale out-of-pocket resources or they will look for free providers.
Okay, I thought I heard something a little bit different, so. Can Ms. Sleeper or somebody, can you, can you address that, uh, as part of the contract? How that's supposed to work?
So I think that what he said was based on the patient's income level, they will be able to find services and it's a sliding scale.
There he is.
Oh, I can hear Nick.
We got you. We're going to have, uh, trustee Ramires ask, uh, the question again, just so that, uh, you can be responsive.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chamnis, uh, my question for you was when you had that financial slide up there, um, the slide on the finances, you, you made a comment, uh, at the very end of that, that slide, something about, you know, the, the person is, the patient is unable to pay for it, that you use a sliding scale. And then you said something about we, sometimes we do free or something like that. Can you repeat that again, please?
Yeah, so just to clarify, we are not the provider, but we will connect families to providers that offer sliding scale options. And so if a family does not have insurance, then we will connect them to providers that offer sliding scale options. And, and sometimes there are free options available, depending on what's available in the community. But we'll always work with the family on what copay they're comfortable with, and then we'll navigate care accordingly and find appropriate resources for them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good question.
All right then, there are no questions. We appreciate you taking the time this evening to share the program with us. And we'll be in touch.
Thank you so much, thank you for your time, everyone, take care.
Have a good night, bye-bye. And champagne.
Good evening, all president, Mr. Ochoa, all the board members and Dr. Delatorre. Good evening, this is champagne. So for this month, since our last, um, monthly report, we have, can you go to the next slide, please? Uh, we have thirty-five project processes going on. Three audit reports issued and with a cap required. And we also completed three projects. We had forty-one active projects going on since, since February and one hotline case since then. Next, please. Uh, these are the audit reports issued since the last month. And every month, uh, when this was, was, uh, issued, it, uh, it's sent forwarded to you on a mon- weekly basis. Now, it has the summary, it has the findings capped in red text. The policy to help everybody, so please read the whole thing, don't just read the red part. Thank you. Uh, next slide, please. And we had one with a follow-up audit from, uh, for the party PK and all the areas were addressed. Next slide, please. And these are the, uh, ongoing projects we have now. So pretty much this department is running very smoothly and we really appreciate all the administrative support because without their support, we will not be able to run things so smoothly. And I would like to see if there's any question.
I want just because it kind of stood out that there was one hotline, um, phone call. How, how many do we usually get?
Say it again.
How many hotline phone calls do we usually get? You, you've mentioned that there was one. And I don't remember seeing one in reports before, so how often do we usually get hotline calls?
Since pandemic, it, the, um, the hotline calls has reduced. So we probably need to do a little bit more awareness, uh, of the, the phones available.
I know that we had put out flyers, I think when we first started the hotline, is that?
So, yeah, I.
I know that we put out the flyers when we first started the hotline. Is, do you think that now that the pandemic's ending and people are coming back, maybe it's worth, um, re-educating or resubmitting flyers or something like, just to remind everybody that it exists and that would?
Yes, I think.
Or is it that we just haven't been having issues or?
Uh, it could be a combination of all of them. Uh, because pandemic, since pandemic, we have lots of issues, related to personal, health mostly, students comes back or not come back. And then, um, also, we were so busy to catch up. And I think everybody's trying to getting back into the routine. So I think that has, uh, some impact as well. Uh, and I think with the, the time we have, since we're getting back to the routine more and more, uh, people can be more, uh, open-minded, not that they are not open-minded now, it's just like, there are just so many things to, for everybody to address, for the family, for the personal, for the, their, their home world, their online access and plus the illness. Me personally, yesterday, I just experienced it, I could not open my eyes, just couldn't. It's just a burning sensation, it's just no reason. Suddenly I had a, I did have the COVID back in January. And there was some lingering little cough, dry cough. And now his eyes, I, you can, I don't hear you very well. Because I'm, I'm having the, the hearing, it's like I'm in the airplane. And this, they go on and. I'm having the, the hearing, it's like I'm in the airplane and this like on and off, on and off. We tried to see doctor, but the doctor is very, very busy. If you go, you wait for two or three hours, it's very difficult. So I think, and we, we are reaching out to schools. When we do the audit projects, we try to contact all the staff and coaches and the principals, directors, try to make good connections, ease everybody's anxiety because audit is stressful to everybody. And we understand that we try to make sure everybody it's not adding to their stress. And from the audit report, you can see there are exceptions that some of those we don't expect to see, but it's repeating it. So it's something that we, we just need to have time to move it forward. I hope you give us a time.
I think relative to raising the awareness, which is I think what you were asking, I think what we'll do is take an inventory and go out to all the schools and make sure that the signage is available, not just at the front of the school, but also in the faculty lounge and other common areas. And then as we attended that presentation last night, I noticed that there were several signs that the law now requires you to have at all of your campuses. So we probably need to go out and do an entire inventory. I know that in chiefs or security department, there has to be signage relative to firearms and what's permissible and not. So maybe what we need to do is take stock, create a list of those signs, purchase high quality signs that look professional and then make sure that every school in, in the district has the, the required signage, including the signage around, having access to a hotline. If in fact you see something, you can say something anonymously.
Yes, and I think our process has, has the credibility for the callers that we, and on a monthly basis, I, in the new employee orientation, I appreciate it. They do give me 10 minutes to share with everybody about this available venue for people to voice their concerns professionally. And so I think we, we hope to, to address this. And I don't want people to feel like this is I got you type of hotline. It's really, it's a venue for people to voice what their, their concerns are in a professional way. And we work with all the departments or schools to make sure the concerns are communicated. Very often it's a miscommunication, hearsays or not understanding the procedure or not understanding the structures. So those type of things. And I think I had very good support from the team to give us that, the procedures and process to, to work with. And if I need help, I will ask.
Thank you. And I'm certainly not looking to create erroneous calls or more calls or anything. I just, it kind of stuck out because I don't remember seeing a number associated with a hotline as far as how many calls have come in or not. So it just kind of looked.
It is very few, yeah. It is very few and we, we do need to, like, like I say, reach out more. And I will try to work with my team. And if I need, I'll work with the PR, maybe they can help me to design some things more attractive because our poster is, is pretty traditional.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, my hearing is not very good. That's why I asked you sir to repeat several times.
No more questions. We thank you, Ms. Champagne.
Thank you.
All right, so we continue now with our agenda review. We will now discuss agenda items as listed in the posted notice of the regular meeting of ISlet ISD Board of Trustees for March 23rd, 2022 and related recommended motions with the superintendent and executive cabinet and receive responses to questions and/or requests for additional information through the superintendent in preparation for deliberation and action on set items on March 23rd, 2022, regular Board of Trustees meeting. So our consent items are as follows. Number one, monthly financials update as of January 2022. Number two, authorized use of investment brokers. Number three, investment training resolution, annual investment training resolution. Number four, annual investment policy review resolution. Number five, request for T E A other waiver. Number six, low attendance day waiver, district wide on February 4th, 2022. What happened on February 4th?
It took us no day.
Oh, the snow day. Okay.
Or inclement weather day, I guess.
Inclement weather day, okay. Okay, number seven, approval of Y S D contract number 20220151 with the United Bank of El Paso del Norte. Now we'll go on to the action items. Order authorizing the issuance of ISlet Independent School District Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds taxable series 202022A. Action item number two, order authorizing issuance of ISlet Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds Series 2022. Action item number three. Resolution authorizing sale of former Desert View Middle School, 1614 Billy Marie Drive, Mesa Vista Elementary School, 8032 Alamo Avenue and Escarate Elementary School, 7090 Alameda Avenue. Action item number four, approval of award of phase number one solicitation, solicitation number 222004 RFP BP 1910 HVAC upgrades Parkland High School. The order of the agenda has been approved. May 1st, may, I'm May 1st, it's been a long night already. May I have an electronic motion and second on the consent items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration?
Mr. President. I move to approve the consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration.
Okay, Ms. Woodrow. I made a motion, do we have a second? Our electronic screen is not working.
We need your trustee Bustillo's vote and President Ochoa's vote.
Okay. Mr. Hagerty seconds. Okay, all votes have been cast. Results are six in favor, none opposed. Action items. Number one, order authorizing the issuance of ISlet Independent School District Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds taxable series 2022A. I understand we have a presentation this evening for this action item number one and action number, action item number two. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board, Dr. Del Torre, Jeff Robert with Hilltop Securities with me this evening, my colleague Maria Urbina, who's also the head of our El Paso office, and the district's bond counsel, Paul Braden, with Norton Rose Fulbright and Mr. Braden prepared the, the two documents associated with items, action items one and two. I'm going to go through this presentation. If you have any questions while I'm in the midst of it, please don't hesitate to stop me. I'd be happy to, happy to answer any questions if I can. First, just kind of want to give you an idea, as many of you probably know right now, it's very volatile in the, the financial markets. You have what's going on in Ukraine, you have inflationary concerns, you have the price of oil and gas, you have even potentially in the future concerns about relations with China. Many things are affecting interest rates right now. And so we're at very volatile times. I had sent this, this presentation to Ms. Leaper and Ms. Haney a few weeks ago. This is a tax exempt interest rate index that comes out every Thursday, goes all the way back to the early eighties. And what I'm meant to, meaning to show here is that even though rates are up a little bit, we're still at historically low times. I don't know how long we'll be there, but we are still at historically low times. They're on the left, all the way back to the early eighties, on the right where we are currently. And as of March 3rd, this index was at 253. The last time it came out this past Thursday, it was still at 253. I do expect for it to go up a little bit, probably this upcoming Thursday. But again, still at relatively low interest rates when you look from a historical perspective. And then the blue graph there just shows what the index has done over the past year. Talking about the, the new money issuance, as you recall, we did the first 275 million from the $425 million of 2019 authorization back in January of 2020. So this parameter order would cover the remaining 150 million and using rates as of March 10th plus 30 basis points to hopefully be conservative. You can see what the, the projected INS tax rate would be. And I'll go over kind of what assumptions we're using, the projected EDA funding in column four of about $136 million. The maximum rate at 50 cents, I think we can hold the line at the current 49.5, which is what was communicated to the voters at the 50 cent level, but we're currently at 49.5. But to give you an idea of the assumptions that we're using, we're trying to be very conservative in terms of tax base growth. We're assuming 2% for the next four years and then zero thereafter. And in discussions with, with Ms. Haney this week, she had mentioned that it looks like the tax base is probably going to grow more than that 2% for four years this current year. So I think we're being extremely conservative. We will get your certified estimate at the end of next month, but the thought is even with the likelihood of the increase in the homestead exemption going from 25 to 40,000, that we're still looking at double digit tax base growth in the district. So that will help this, this model immensely.
That's good news.
In terms of, in terms of your, your average daily attendance, we are using your current ADA and we're assuming that declines by 1% each year for the next five years and then levels off just under 32,000 thereafter, hopefully again, being conservative. So that's where that, 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 that line on the graph comes from. If for instance, the tax base grows at a higher rate, which it sounds like it will, that line can come down some over time. If the student count or ADA count is higher than what we're projecting, that would mean more state funding, you could see that line come down as well. Any questions on, on that slide? If not, if you'll recall, also we're looking at this, this go around at another potential taxable refunding. But if you recall back in March of 2020, the board approved a parameter refunding order that allowed for us to save, if you go over to the far right there, save just over $49 million. And that really, really helped in terms of providing capacity and hopefully being able to accommodate the issuance of this remaining 150 million. And I do want to point out one thing, the board approved that in March and we didn't do it immediately. We had to wait for rates to kind of get to where it, it, it made sense or made the most sense in terms of saving the district the most money. So you can see we actually priced that issuance in June or June 23rd of 2020. The, the refunding candidates that we're looking at this go around are maturities from the 2014 and 2017 issues. If you look at the bottom, there is the potential that if we need to downsize the issuance, we could always do that in order to maximize the savings and the efficiency of the refunding itself. A lot of numbers here, I apologize for how small it is. When I ran this on March 10th, I'd mentioned that tax exempt rates were relatively the same now versus where they were on March 10th. However, taxable rates or treasury rates have come up quite a bit. So I used 15 basis points of cushion at the time. Right now, the 10-year treasury is about 30 basis points higher than it was on March the 10th. So instead of this being March 10th rates plus 15, we probably need to get to current rates less 15. So we need some help in terms of what rates might do in the coming weeks and months in order to achieve this, this. But this would be the minimum level of savings that the parameter would allow for. If you look up there in the top right corner, in the light blue section, the present value is a percentage of refunded principal at 4.17. We have the parameter in the, in the order at 4%. So we wouldn't go below this basically, or just slightly below it, but it'd be about $300,000 per year if, if we refund, refund the entire amount and, and we're able to achieve 4% savings. So 7.6 million in the red there at the bottom, which again would help accommodate the issuance of this remaining authorization as well and just save taxpayers' money. The parameter bond orders, I think many of you are familiar with them. At the end of the day, they're allowed under Texas government code. You delegate final pricing authority to the superintendent and/or chief financial officer. I'm sorry, Ms. Leaper, your title, chief financial and operations officer, pardon me, to finalize the pricing if the parameters are met. The parameters are listed there. And again, the only way that, that they could approve the issuance is if all these parameters are met. And we've utilized this authority on all of the financings over the last roughly 17-plus years. Again, especially in times like these when interest rates are very volatile, I think the parameter authority is very helpful because we can literally be in day-to-day mode, which would allow us to pull a financing if we were planning to finance a certain date and for whatever reason rates were up. And on the flip side, it would allow us to hopefully schedule a pricing at a time where it would be most beneficial to the district. The parameters that are included in the orders that Mr. Braden prepared are listed on here. Again, the maximum principal amount would be the remaining 150 million on the new money parameter, a maximum true interest cost of 5%. Don't feel like it's going to be anywhere near that, but just for flexibility reasons, we've got that figure in there. The final maturity date of 2056. And then the refunding, refunding parameters listed below, the important things to note is that we won't issue more principal than what we're refunding. The maximum true interest cost 4%, the minimum savings threshold is that 4% present value figure I mentioned. And then the final maturity day, we would not be extending the term. We would be financing or refinancing the bonds over their current term. With that, I know I went through very quickly. If there's any questions, I'd be happy, happy to answer them.
No? Yes, sir, please. You mentioned the maximum true interest cost. You said it's not going to be 5%.
I don't feel like it'll be at that level. I mean, we are in very volatile times. I didn't want to set a parameter that's so low that if we get above it, we would have to come back to the board, you know, maybe a month later. So in, in the way these work, it's not something that, that we would do the financing and it would, for lack of a better term, just show up on Dr. Del Torre's doorstep. He would be involved in it, you know, from the start. So we would kind of give him an indication and say, if we price today, it'd probably be around, let's say, four and a quarter. And I'm just throwing this number out there, that's just a made up number. And he, and he at any time could say, you know what, even that, even though that's below the parameter, we don't want to move forward with that. So we've got the 5% level in there just to give us, give us flexibility, but, but at the end of the day, Dr. Del Torre and Ms. Leaper are going to. But, but at the end of the day, Dr. Del Torre and Ms. Leeper are going to give us the, the go ahead or the, or the halt to proceed or not to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask, we have granted this authority and the other amount of money that was there before, right?
Yes, sir.
And we did have a savings of how much?
On, on the, the taxable refunding, we had savings of, excuse me, 49 million, a little over $49 million. Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is for the other 150 million that were given to you the authority for 365 days, flexibility to act on it should the interest rate be favorable to this letter Independent School District? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so.
Can you go over that? I, I quite understand what you're saying.
There, we're giving them the issuance of these, of the 150 million dollars, giving it the authority to Ms. Leeper and Dr. Del Torre, just like we did on the 450 million that we did back in March of last year, wasn't it? Or is it?
The, the refunding itself was back in March. Yes, sir. And then we did it in June.
Yeah, of last year. And that saved, because they acted on it when they found it favorable, interest rate favorable to us, they reissued that money and saved us 49 million and something dollars. So I think this is only the, the process now for the 100, the remaining 150 million. And even though it's a four and a quarter, but you, you say that trend, you're very, you're looking at trends, you're looking at, I'm, I'm sure you're looking at a lot of numbers, but in the long run, should it be favorable, then you will act on it so we can get a more favorable interest rate for these 150 million. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're looking at two parameters. So the 150 million is for the new money issuance, which is the remainder of the 2019 authorization. And then for the, the refunding, which would be similar to the one we did back in March of 2020, that's a maximum amount of 173. Now, let me say, I feel like we're definitely, we would definitely be issuing the 150 million because the district needs those proceeds to continue projects. The refunding, I hope that rates are favorable to allow us to do it, but there's no guarantee
Right.
that rates would be favorable enough to allow for us to achieve the parameter. But there's, there's certainly the hope that, that we would be able to execute that over the next, next year. Yes, sir.
I think last year it was because of, we were just coming out of this COVID situation and, and the economy was trying to grow again and be more favorable at that time. Now, because of everything that is uncertain that's happening worldwide, I think that has an effect on our, on our interest rates as what we're here. But we still have that possibility of having some, acting on it and having some favorable refunds as far as this 150 million.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
What I had, and I talked to Maria this morning, this afternoon, and she made, she clarified this refunding as well. It threw me for a loop, but I, but now I understand.
Yes, sir.
The principal.
So this action item is just to authorize you to, to make that, those decisions on behalf of Isleta with Ms. Leeper and Dr. Del Torre giving you the go ahead. Any other questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Think you'll have to switch back to the agenda.
Yeah.
In order to vote.
We are. I think.
He hasn't switched back.
We're all on it? Go ahead. So going back, action item, order authorizing the issuance of Isleta Independent School District Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds taxable Series 2022A. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion, further discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion? Ms. Woodruff?
Mr. President, I move to approve an order authorizing the issuance of Isleta Independent School District Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds. This is right. Taxable Series 2022A, levying a continuing direct annual ad valorem tax for the payment of such bonds and resolving other matters incident and related thereto, including delegating certain matters relating to the sale and issuance of bonds to authorize district officials within specified parameters.
We have a second by Mr. Mike Rosales. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Results are six in favor, none opposed. Action item number two. Order authorizing issuance of Isleta Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds Series 2022. Using your electronic hand, is there any further discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion?
I move to approve an order to other authorization insurance of Isleta Independent School District Ultimate Tax School Building Bonds Series 2022, leaving and continuing direct annual ad valorem tax for the payment of such bonds and resolving other matters in, inside it and related thereto, including delegating certain matters relating to the sale and insurance of the bonds to authorize direct officials within specified parameters.
I have a second by Ms. Woodruff. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, six in favor, none opposed. Action item number three. Resolution authorizing the sale of former Desert View Middle School, 1614 Billy Marie Drive, Mesa Vista Elementary School, 8032 Alamo Avenue, and Escarate Elementary School, 7090 Alameda Avenue. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
What I'm finding as I talk to community members from the Mesa Vista area is that there is a lot, a lot of fear over the sale. A lot of fear that we might perhaps sell this property to, to people that would not be in the best interest of the community. And I don't really want to specify that because they're the ones who are, you know, telling me this. And so I was just hoping that maybe we could have some comments to help with that fear and so that the constituency and the, and the neighborhood people in that area, the community, can maybe release some of that fear. I know we've also had some news comments about what could be happening on the news. And so maybe if we could straighten out some of the misinformation that I feel is out there, that would be great.
Sure. And it's something similar to what trustee Bustillos and I discussed relative to Escarate. This is a very preliminary step and it really involves taking the position that these properties are surplus and that they are available for your consideration, the board's consideration to sell. Prior to doing that in general, you would legally have to make all of the local charter schools aware of its existence. Ms. Leeper and her department, her division will likely, if they haven't already, secure appraisals for the property. Even if a charter school were to come before the board, the board is not required to consider or obligated to take the offer. And that is true of anybody that comes before the board. So for example, if somebody has made it clear that they'd like to use the Mesa Vista property for something that you and your constituents don't support, then it would be this board's responsibility to simply deny the sale to that body. Even if you sell it to someone who is undecided as to what they want to do with it, the first thing they have to do is go through the process to get it coded from being a, a school property to something other than that, whether it's commercial or residential. And that process also requires that they hold open meetings for the neighbors and the public so that they can express their interests, their concerns. So this is very preliminary. The one thing I always want to reinforce, not just to you, because I know you know this, but to your constituents and the public, is that under no circumstance can the administration sell any property in the district. The only people that have the authority to do that are sitting on the dais. So you'll never wake up in the morning and read in the paper that we sold one of your schools. Yes, sir.
Could all that be avoided by just adding language to the, the contract that says, we're selling this with the understanding or the whatever that this property will not be used for a school of any kind?
I'll defer to Mr. Safi. In other words, can the district take or make a motion prior to making the property surplus that the property will not be sold for any other, for, for a specific purpose?
The initial question really is, is it surplus or not? And then, for instance, when the property would be, once it's declared surplus, if the property would be advertised for sale or listed with a broker who would then handle the marketing of the property. And at that point, the, the board could put certain restrictions on the use of the property. You would want to be careful on that, to not be overly restrictive to where someone, say, feels that the restriction is discriminatory in an unlawful way. Okay, there have been in the past restrictive covenants that have been declared unconstitutional because they were discriminatory in an unlawful way. So yes, there could be some limitations put on it, but you'd want to be circumspect about that. You'd want to be careful about what restrictions you might want to put on the use of the property that, that would be disposed of. Of course, the first issue, as Dr. Del Torre points out, the first hurdle is you do have to, right off the bat, you have to offer it to charter schools that meet the criteria. And they have a preferential right to, you know, engage the district to try to purchase the property. If no charter school purchases it, then the district would have some leeway in limiting the uses. Now, the way that would have to be is ultimately those would have to be in the form of restrictive covenants in the deed to the buyer. The more restrictive covenants you place, the less the market value of the property. Because fair market value is based on highest and best use from an economic perspective. And the more you limit that, then the more you limit the possible sales value of the property. And as trustees, okay, we're coming around now, we're, we're making, we're coming around the circle. As trustees, you have a fiduciary obligation to, really to the students and taxpayers to try to, within reason, maximize the return on your, on property that you hold. In other words, if you decide to sell it, you can't just give it away. That'd be a gift to public funds. And so that, those are all things that the board can consider in terms of, okay, are there certain restrictions that we want to place that don't unduly, that number one, aren't illegal because they're unlawfully discriminatory? Number two, don't significantly hamper the possible sales value of the property. But I would agree, Dr. Del Torre, I think your initial step is to declare it surplus and then maybe separately on each property, because you may want to put a restriction on one property that wouldn't be really applicable to a second one. I think you've got three here in front of you. And so, you know, maybe declare them surplus and then maybe bring back at a separate board meeting once, let's say, you know that no charter school is going to buy it, then look at, okay, on a property by property basis, which restrictions would we want to put on this? Possibly with the advice of a real estate broker in terms of what that will do in terms of marketing the property.
But, but to your point, and to be fiduciary responsible, wouldn't it be more prudent to place those restrictions because, say, we lose $3 million on the sale, but we don't lose 300 kids to a charter school that moves in and then we lose that funding from here until, yeah, till forever? In the end, that would cost a whole lot more than we would lose in the sale. And then we, if I understand you right, we have no recourse? We have to offer it to a charter school first?
That's correct.
And then we're allowed to put on a restriction?
That's correct. It has to first, charter schools first have to have the opportunity to try to negotiate with the district. And that was added to the law specifically because there were school districts that were refusing to sell surplus properties to charter schools. And so the charter schools were able to get the legislature to amend the laws just, just to require that charter schools get the first shot at any district school property that's declared surplus.
So if we put it for a sales amount and they meet that amount, are we bound to sell it to them? Or are we then still allowed to say, no, we're not going to sell it?
The...
They say we offer it for 100 bucks and a charter school comes and says, yeah, we got 100 bucks, we want it. Are we allowed to say, no, we're not selling?
No.
Do we have to?
Well, no, I, I take that back. I mean, you could, you never have to, you're never bound to accept an offer, but if you set parameters for the sale, you know, say, we, we will, we'll sell it for this amount and the charter school comes and says, okay, we'll pay that amount. I, I think the charter school would have a legitimate complaint that maybe of education, the spirit of the education code, at least, maybe the letter was being violated by refusing to sell the charter school, to the charter school on terms that were otherwise acceptable to the board. But if you don't state the specific terms on which you would accept it, then you don't have to accept any offer that's made unless you've committed to terms that you will accept.
Gotcha. So then is it better to write, make us an offer and we stick it in the window and see what we get as opposed to setting a price?
That's right.
You'd make it negotiable contingent on the appraisal, legal counsel, and whatever the board determines is fair market value without going into any specific number that would then give them a target that once they can arrive at that target, we're, we're in a corner.
Thank you.
I, I believe there is a resolution in the board book that is, includes more details. And I think, as I recall, the terms for the offer to a charter is make your best, you know, your best offer by date X. And so it's not like we're giving them a number and if they meet it, we're somehow bound to do it. So whatever a charter offers, if any charter offers anything, we, that would come back to the board and they could take it or reject it in consideration of also what is the fair market value of the property. So we are not, at this point, giving charter schools a number to hit. We are not.
I do have a comment on that, comment you made that... I do have a comment on that, comment you made, that we have a fiduciary responsibility to the district to maximize the return on the sale of these. But we also have a responsibility to the communities where these schools reside as to their well-being and that it wouldn't be detrimental to the neighborhood in itself because I think we also have that responsibility to, not only... Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. And in some cases, it might be competing responsibilities that the board, in its judgment, would need to balance out, to consider, on the one hand, the return, and on the other hand, the effect on your community. So, yes, you, you would need to...
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, sir.
That it's not just about the return.
No. No, sir. Not at all. And I'm sorry if I might have left that impression.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Any other discussion?
Just to clarify my mind, we're voting to, to put the surplus property for sale. Is that correct?
That's it.
Tonight?
Tonight's suggestion is to identify it as surplus.
Okay. So, how do we set the parameters? At what point do we set parameters? And that's, that's my question.
Well, what, what I would suggest is, the first thing you have to do is let the charter, interested charter schools that meet the parameters of, you know, having a, a presence in the district and so forth, let them know, "This property has been declared surplus. Do you want to make an offer to buy it?" Then, if no charter, if none of the properties, or to the extent any of the three properties are not sold to a charter school, then you could then consider restrictions on the use of the property when you sell it. But you cannot restrict a charter school from using it for a charter school. And you do have to first offer it. Let the charter schools know it's available for purchase. So, my suggestion would be, declare them surplus, get the offer to the charter schools out of the way. Then, at that point, with that information in hand, okay, we didn't, none of them were sold to charter schools, these are the three properties available, then look at the properties individually and decide what restrictions, if any, you would want to place on the ultimate use of the property by the ultimate purchaser. That'd be my suggestion on the way to, on the way to proceed.
And, and at that point, so, the resolution that is attached in your board book just sets a deadline for any charter schools to make an, to make an offer. That's what it does. It doesn't give anything more than that. And if anybody makes an offer, we, we have to come back to you to show you that offer. And obviously, that offer would be to use it as a charter school, okay? We, they don't have the right to buy it and then flip it to a developer. They, they don't have the right to do that. So, then, if, as Mr. Safi says, if you clear out of the way now that requirement that we did what we were supposed to do under the law with charter schools, then there's a whole other process for advertising it through newspapers and to give another deadline for people to bid in a public sale, et cetera, et cetera, and see what offers you get regarding to that and how that compares to fair market, what you've gotten as appraisals, et cetera. And again, the best offer, if we wanted to accept, set the best offer, we could bring it back to you, you look at it. But at the time we set, just like we did with South Loop recently, at the time we set those conditions for how people bid at a public sale, we would put all the restrictions in there, as is, where is, you know, under this condition, that condition, we would put all of those, you know, how many days to close, all of those things in the requirements for any acceptable bid.
And part of the reason for that would be that prospective bidders would need to know, before they place a bid, what restrictions there are, there would be on the use of the property. So, that would be the time to, to finalize any restrictions that the board wanted to place on use of, future use of the property.
I'd just like to make the comment that Ms. Austin pointed out, when you also finalized the sale of South Loop, you brought it back to the board for consideration. So, we still have another opportunity to, to address that and say yes or no at that point. And I think that's an important part of that as well, too. But I, but I share the concern of the other trustees as the direction that we're going.
And if I may, so, of the eight, seven properties that are currently identified as surplus properties, three of those have had the charter notices sent. We've had no response. So, Camino Real, RFK, and South Loop, all charter notices were sent and no one was interested. So, it's not as if, you know, they're knocking down our doors to get to our properties. In fact, that's why Camino Real is getting ready to be demolished because there's a better market for a vacant property than there is for any of the buildings we've abandoned. We abandoned them for a reason. Nobody else right now has wanted them. South Loop was the one unique one that was still in good enough condition with some minor repairs with the teakwas. They were able to put it to good use, but they received a significant grant to invest in that facility. So, this is just the first step. As you mentioned, everything comes back to you. There is not a single transaction, as Dr. De La Torre said, you're not going to wake up and see this in the paper. You must approve it.
I'm sorry. I do have one other question. You said that a charter school can't buy it and flip it to an investor or a developer. We put all these restrictions on there, which you said that would lower the property value. Can an investor buy it and flip it to a charter school? Because then, like, well, I'm not going to use it to buy a charter school. Or I'm not going to buy it to make a charter school out of it. I'm going to turn around and flip it to a charter school, but I'm not going to, myself not do it. So, do those restrictions leave once somebody buys it? Can they buy it at a lower price because we put these restrictions on it and turn around and sell it to a charter school?
Probably. I would think so.
So, I guess, we have an appraisal on these properties. They're all appraised. We're going to first do the charter notice, then we're going to put them out to bid. If we get a bid and it's grossly under fair market value, it's not likely I would bring it back to you and recommend that you sell for that value. I would be more inclined to say, "Let's demo it and sell the vacant property because it may be a better deal for the district." That's provided it's a, a private entity, not a charter school asking for it. Charter school won't go through the bid process. The charter school will respond to my notice saying, "Hey, I am interested." So, it's two completely different processes. Yes, an investor could come in and purchase that land, but if your covenants are there restricting the use, I don't think they could turn around and then lease it or use it for charter school purposes. Is that fair, Mr. Safi and Ms. Austin?
Well, it could be one of the covenants.
Well, I would really be reluctant to put a covenant in there that the property could not be used for a charter school, given the language in the education code. I think your restrictive covenant should be aimed at things that would really maybe affect the community in a negative way. In other words, certain types of commercial establishments that maybe would be, that you wouldn't want one of your younger students walking into, or that it may not even be legal for one of your younger students to walk into. I think those are the types of establishments that you would want to possibly restrict But I, I agree with Ms. Leeper. I think if a charter school is interested, they're going to express interest at the very beginning. It's very unlikely that they would surface later. And again, I think you want to use, you want to be judicious in what restrictions you put because if, if all you're going to do is zero in on certain types of establishments that you don't think are wholesome type establishments for families and young students, that shouldn't diminish the value much at all.
Ms. Leeper, I'm, just one more question, I'm sorry. Is the city in any better position to do anything with some of these properties?
They have not currently expressed an interest in collaborating with us as they initially did on the RFK property. I have received a request recently from them, but it was for weekend use of a property, not a purchase. So, I'm always talking with them. If there's an opportunity, we will definitely jump on it.
Yeah, I've seen that the law enforcement group over at Camino Real on, on several occasions doing, you know, rehearsals and practices and stuff, but I, I was just kind of curious if, if, because I, if I recall, at least in the RFK property, that Sun Metro was very interested.
Environmental Services wanted to buy it, turn it into a professional development center next to the Sun Metro station, yes. And the city had plans to buy it, but then had a pandemic.
Is there, is there any possibility we go back to the city again and just talk about properties in general?
We alwa, we already are doing that.
Okay, thank you.
So, yes, that's always an opportunity we pursue because it can be a collaboration between two governmental entities, and it's one of the exceptions to having to sell for fair market value. You can work out something for the public use, public good.
And, and, and as Mr. Safi was stating, you know, as neighbor of one of those empty properties, and by the way, I appreciate the fact that you keep up with that, you know, and, but it's starting to get pretty worn.
They are.
You know, as a neighbor of one of those properties, I'm more concerned about the property being sold to somebody who may not be as good a neighbor as I would like them to be. And then, the other thing, too, is that, you know, I, I see our security folks, you know, constantly at, at, at that school and Camino Real and, you know, and there's, and keeping the lights on, you know, electricity on, those are all costs that, you know, and so, I understand that, but, okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Okay. Resolution authorizing the sale of former Desert View Middle School, sixteen fourteen Billy Marie Drive, Mesa Vista Elementary School, eighty thirty-two Alamo Avenue, and Escarate Elementary School, seventy ninety Alameda School. Have a motion. Mr. Rosales?
I move to approve a resolution authorizing the sale, under Texas Code, Education Code one one point one five four, of real property formerly used as Desert View Middle School, located at sixteen forty-one Billy Marie Drive, El Paso, Texas. Mesa Vista Elementary School, located at eight zero three two Alamo Avenue, El Paso, Texas. And Escarate Elementary School, located at seven zero nine zero Alameda Avenue, El Paso, Texas. In whole or, in part or lease, including terms of prior notice to open enrollment in charter schools, possible demolition of part or all of the facility prior to public sale, and appropriate or required steps with any sale to be effective following the district's discontinuance of use of these properties for school or other district purposes.
We have a second from Mr. Hagary. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Results are six in favor, none opposed. Action item number four, approval of award of phase number one, solicitation number two two zero, two 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 zero zero four, RFP, BP one nine one zero, HVAC upgrades, Parkland High School. Is there any discussion? No further discussion. Please cast your votes. Oh, may I have a motion, sorry. Mr. Hagary?
Mr. President, I move to approve the much-needed and very anticipated for over ten years, award of phase number one, solicitation two 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 zero zero four, RFP, BP one nine one zero, HVAC upgrades, Parkland High School, the four hundred and five hundred halls, for two million eight hundred eighty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty dollars to Bain's General Contractors Incorporated, from bond funds towards the guaranteed maximum price, with the remaining packages totaling guaranteed maximum price and estimated cost of construction presented at subsequent board meetings, contingent upon final negotiation of contract details, legal counsel review, and Form twelve ninety-five certificate of interested parties.
Okay. May I, please cast your votes.
Was there a second on that?
There is a second by Mr. Rosales.
Mr. Rosales, second. Votes have been cast. Our results are six in favor, none opposed. Before I, we adjourn, I want to thank everybody for their patience and their diligence and shown during this board meeting. I think we asked some very good questions, we got some very good answers, and it's been a good board meeting. And I want to appreciate everybody that's, has contributed to that. Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
And I'd like to thank the board and the district for bringing students back so we could recognize them and their families and, and for our, our, our group of folks back there, administrators back there who are, are holding the fort for us. Thank you for allowing that to happen because we've missed it and we've missed the opportunity to, to be excited with our students. So, thank you.
Thank you all. And if there's no further discussion, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Adjourn.